All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 4th, 2019 School Committee Meeting here at Tingsboro High School. I will remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order. We will start with introductions.
Sure.
Robert Mullen.
Good evening, Julie Quastert.
Hi, good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan Superintendent.
Anthony Teneral.
Ryan McMahon.
Paul Mitchell.
Rebecca Stanton.
Joe Messina Business Administration.
A.J. Moore, Senior Representative.
All right, thank you. At this time we'll stand for the part of the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody, and welcome. At this time I'll look for a motion to approve the June 3rd, 2019 Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, and the May 7th School Committee and Executive Session Minutes. The Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
Make that motion.
Second. Any further discussion? Polls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Okay, seven zero zero. Correspondence.
Just to give you three items of correspondence tonight. The first one I'll talk about is we received an email from Brian Lynch. Brian Lynch is the project manager for MSBA. He's going to be our liaison, our coordinator. So we are in the process, it was actually supposed to happen this morning, unfortunately Brian couldn't make it. But we're supposed to have a conference call with Matt Hansen, Rick Rowe, and myself to talk about the five deliverables that we have due by February 28th, 2020, for the MSBA. The first deliverable we've satisfied, it's the initial compliance certification, so essentially all that required was a signature from the chair that says we will follow all mass regulations and protocols regarding procurement and whatnot. So that first deliverable has been satisfied. We're sending that off to Brian Lynch. The next one that we need to talk about is what the school building committee will look like. So we're going to have that conversation, hopefully in the next week or so with MSBA, in terms of what the composition of that needs to be. So what I would say, I would encourage through the chair, if any committee member is interested in serving on the school building committee, if you could email Mrs. Fairbanks, say by next Friday, just so we have a sense of how many members want to serve. If there are three spots and we have three members, great. If there are two spots and we have seven members, that's an issue. We'll have to figure out how to deal with that at our next school committee meeting. That deliverable is not due until the first week in August, so we have time. So at the July meeting, we'll make a decision on what committee members will serve, and we'll go forward from there. So I'll have more information regarding the composition of that committee at our next meeting.
And on that, if I may, it's actually the Board of Selectmen that run this meeting?
Absolutely, yes.
It's not the school committee thing, it's...
The Board of Selectmen are overseeing the entire project. The town of Tingsboro is borrowing the money and building the facility.
Correct.
So that's, that's all I have from MSBA, but the Branko creation.
So we have received a letter that is in your drive. I'll pull it up quickly. I can see it in here. Why can't I see it in there?
Seven to three B.
Thank you. My new glasses come in like this week. I'm almost at fifty, and I'm getting, they're not called bifocals, they're called the...
Aggressives?
Aggressives. I'm very happy about that, by the way.
They're beautiful.
So, thank you. So, Mr. Ogden received a letter from Niasq about our accreditation. It is in your drive, so I'm not going to read through the whole thing. I did highlight a couple points of interest for the public and the committee. So number one, they voted to accept the combined five-year progress report and special progress report that was put forth by Tingsboro High School. And many, many positive aspects were highlighted in this letter. A couple that jumped right out to me were the efforts to accommodate curriculum development, evaluation, and revision, and to invest in teachers' work and time to do that work, to make sure that we're always updating our curriculum documents and our flow regarding remaining on the cutting edge of teaching and learning. Additional collaboration opportunities for special education and regular education teachers to enhance teaching and learning, and beef up our inclusional practices in co-teaching classes. So you know that that's been a big focus at the elementary school and middle school for years. That's having a trickle-up effect. We have a greater majority of students in inclusionary settings across the district, which is the direction we clearly have been trying to go for years. And so very proud of that work. So they recognized us there. Also recognized us for our efforts around ELL students and getting teachers on board with sheltered English immersion endorsement. Just today I found out that we are going to be partnering with Mastall, which is a Massachusetts organization that will be providing sheltered English immersion course for teachers here in Tingsboro next year. We're going to be a host site, opening that up to get more of our teachers trained in that, and then inviting teachers from other school districts as well. So they recognized us there. Also recognized us on recently completing our curriculum map reviews and making sure that we have departments working hard on that, putting together guiding documents for all teachers so that we have some standardized practices and expectations. And they've changed our timeline a little bit, so they pushed us out a year, which I believe is a positive reflection on our results, right? So school is now hosted to post its decennial accreditation visit the calendar year of 2025. So what that means is our next accreditation cycle will begin 2022, and there will be a review committee visit on 2023. So Principal Ogden has a long timeline ahead of him to keep up, and we'll have periodic reports over time on that. But a lot of positive information coming out of the Niasq report. So congratulations to the minister's staff and teaching staff at Tingsboro High School.
And then the third piece of correspondence, I don't think it was lost, I remember this committee that our district tuition really kind of threw our budget out this past school year. So Mr. Messina is going to provide an update.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So as you know, as we've done our FY '20 budget, we've seen that increased out-of-district costs on our special education tuitions. That's not going to happen July 1st. That's already been impacting us this fiscal year. As part of the circuit breaker program, DESI has the opportunity for school districts to file emergency relief or extraordinary cost relief for costs incurred this year. Sarah Lewinsek and Karen Chacey in our Student Services Office did all the appropriate filings. Happy to report that DESI gave us additional funding at the beginning of May of $318,325. That must be used by June 30th of this year, so we will continue to pay tuitions that would have brought our budget into a negative out of that circuit breaker account. Might also require some journal entries of some previous invoices paid this year to that circuit breaker account. But it does give us a little bit of cost relief in this fiscal year, and hopefully protects those reserves we hope to have starting in FY '20 in your budget.
And I think that was the big comment you made all along, is we're concerned about tapping all our reserves towards the end of this fiscal year, and this allows us to protect those reserves moving forward.
Some of them.
Some of them. So, good news, and to thank you, to thank you to Mrs. Lewinsek, Mrs. Chacey, they worked extensive hours on that, so we're very, very pleased with that response from DESI.
Absolutely.
Well, what's the percentage of, I mean, that $325,000 represents what percent of those special needs?
So the circuit breaker program is designed to reimburse 75% of costs over two and a half times special ed foundation.
Yeah.
Historically, their funding right now is about 72%, even though they mandated to fund 75%. It just, it gives you an opportunity when your special education costs have grown abundantly over the fiscal year.
So it meets that 72%?
Yes.
Okay.
Subcorrespondence. Any other comments or questions on that? Thank you to all involved in getting that. That's huge. Before I move to visitors' comments and questions, I apologize for not doing it sooner, but we'd like to recognize Becky Stanton, who has joined our committee. She won the election, so congratulations on that, and welcome to our board.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
And now visitors' comments and questions. And we actually have visitors tonight.
Do you know why I have people behind us, hi, and see what's going on and chat?
No.
But it's always nice. We invite people.
And I have such a pleasant disposition. You're quite lucky.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I guess I just had some concerns regarding the changes that are going to be happening to the theater program in town.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. I'm Dustine Puma.
And you're Ibis?
Seven, Belfer Lane.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have two daughters in the district, sophomore going into junior year and eighth grader coming into high school. So both of them are actively involved in a number of sports and also involved in theater. So they try to fit in theater when they can, in balancing with their sport commitments. So I kind of straddle both the sport and the theater kids, I guess you could say. So for my girls, the theater program is very important to them because it does fill in when they don't have a sport. And having so many options available to them allows for them to be able to do so. And with the changes, I'm concerned that some of those will be altered, some of them might be weakened, some of them might be too much for Ms. Martin to handle on her own. Some of them might be beyond what it is, and it surprises me that in our district, which is a small school, and as I tell everyone, we get a lot of bang for our buck because we are such a small school. And I wouldn't think of sending my kids anywhere other than Tingsboro High School. But the reality is, is that, like, with the bang for the buck, we have a successful theater program as it is now. I mean, the kids themselves won 20 awards just this year alone, for recognition, for acting. We won probably the Super Bowl of all theater for small schools when we won the best show with Les Mis. Some of you might have seen it. It was great. It was amazing. And this year, the middle school production is also up again for best show. My daughters have won awards because of the theater program. So to take the theater program and change it, alter it, modify it in any way, when it is arguably probably one of the most successful programs in the district, and to change it in some way, like, I teach in Tooksbury High, so when I talk to my kids in Tooksbury High, they know about our theater program. They don't really know about our other programs. And that's in competition in their sport events, that's competition in other ways, whether it be academics, whether it be robotics. And to modify the theater program, which again is arguably probably the most successful component that in some respects puts us on the map, and to alter it in some way is concerning for me. And I understand, you know, it's an elective for the daytime, and for the afternoon athletics, or activities after school, extracurricular activities. We, the theater program services, like, what, 40 kids and then probably 40 kids at both?
Just for the cast members, for the main stage shows in middle school and high school, it was like between 35 and 50 kids per show.
So you're dealing with a group of kids who gain confidence, who gain speaking ability. My girls have no problem standing in front of people and speaking. They really don't. They're very confident. And so that being, and it also promotes to them to be nicer to the kids who are on the outskirts, because theater is very welcoming. And both of my girls are very welcoming to all kids. They are the kid that will, and I, and they are the kid that will sit with the kid that are by themselves. And part of it is that theater intake. So my girls have activities. They're not here tonight because they are both at an activity. One is helping to coach softball, and then has a softball practice, and the other one is at her basketball practice. So for my girls, if theater was to somehow go away, which I know is not happening, but for some reason to go away, they could just do track. They'd be fine. Because they're athletes in addition to being theater kids. For some of those theater kids, if you were to modify, take away, alter, change, those theater kids do not have another activity that they can switch to. And again, it is probably one of arguably the most successful component that we have in the building, or in the district. So to start to chip away at it, and granted, you are maintaining a lot of the components, which I was very happy to see in conversations I have had, and you're making as many combinations that you can, and I know budgets are tight, and you guys can only do it with the numbers that you're given. But my girls are also in sports, and they never suffer for uniforms. It seems like they're getting new uniforms year after year, which is awesome and amazing, because I think Paloma's doing a great job. But at the same time, there's cuts on a program that again has won 20 awards this year alone. And if you start to tuck back on those kids that are on the outskirts, that aren't the athletes, where do they go if things start to cut back even further?
All right, well, I'll start by saying the theater program is a big part of Tingsboro Public Schools.
And I know you guys have seen the shows, and I just, what I don't want to happen is for the chips, the chipping away at it. And then in two years, when you have to make more budgetary decisions, and now we haven't won 15, 20 awards in a year, because it's been chipped away, now it's only five. So now it's a little easier to say, hey, you know what, it's not as strong again, so, well, this is an easy cut for us when we have to have, fill in the blank.
All right, well, we will discuss this further.
Okay.
And one of us will get back to you.
Well, I've had conversations with people, and I have put it out on, I'm not a big, like, let's make drama on Facebook person. I'm really not. But I know it's a way to accumulate data, because I know data is very important in education now. And it was just a way for me to get feedback, and the feedback that I got from the community was in very support of, like, maintaining the theater program as it is, and not making these changes.
All right, well, thank you for coming out this evening.
You're welcome.
And one of us will get back to you.
That's fine, and I know you guys are going to do everything that you can, and you're restricted by the budgets that you get from the selectmen. So I know that you're going to do everything that you can to make sure it's equitable for all kids.
And it is a very, very important program to Tingsboro Public Schools. It truly is. And we all know that and recognize it, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can you state your name and address?
Yes. Oh, I'm not in sports. I'm clear. My name is Stephanie McIsaac. I live on Chestnut Road in Tingsboro, and I have three children in the district. One is a sophomore at the Volk, one is a freshman at the high school, and one is a senior at the high school, graduating next, this Friday. So like I had stated, I'm also, I just am here at my very first school committee meeting because I do have some concerns. And I'm not a Facebook person. There's, but there's a lot of talk, there's a lot of emails, there's a lot of discussion. And it was a real blow, and I think that, Dr. Flanagan, you're familiar with, you know, a lot of the turmoil that went on in our, in our theater program. The, the program that makes it possible for, you know, all, all of the funding to produce these programs, when there were some real significant changes in just, you know, just the personnel involved. Ultimately, I saw that have a really, I saw what happens with the adults really negatively affect a great, great program. And I feel like it's, it's built up over the past, so my involvement has been seven years, and it's been a real, it's, it's been a lot of struggling, but it's, it's really built back up, I think, to the level that it, that it has, had been used to. And I just would like for the board, if there are some cuts or, you know, some changes, maybe not for this year, but maybe in coming years. And again, with the changes that are going to be happening with our middle school teacher leaving, and my understanding is that position is not going to be filled. So we have a woman who is doing a great job with the high school, and now she's going to be taking on the middle school as well. And I know that the kids are devastated, and they also, I, I think that they deserve to have the same kind of dedication that they had. And I know that Ms. Martin's going to do everything she can to do that, but I just wonder if it's a little unfair to put that much on her. And, and my biggest concern is that if there are issues that are, you know, and there are bound to be some hiccups along the way with, with what lies ahead in the coming year, will that reflect poorly on the theater program, like Dustine had said, you know, will they look back and say, well, we didn't, you know, they technically didn't really sell out, you know, the auditorium. There's not as many kids signing up for it, so is that a program that maybe, you know, they're, they're kind of on their way out, so we can go ahead and, and chip away? Like she said, it makes some more cuts. So I, I just was very concerned and wanted to really make sure I have the right information, too, before I, you know, before I start mourning for a program that is, is near and dear to me and my family. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Lambert, Ohio Road in Tingsboro, and I came because the theater is important to our family as well. And actually, we looked at other schools, to be quite honest, and we chose to stay in the Tingsboro district. My daughters had, and the public school. Got a fabulous experience with academics and with theater. She's played a lot of sports as well, but she has a love of theater. And Tingsboro's become well-known for theater. It has quite the reputation for what my colleagues have already spoke about. And there's fear by the children that this is going to go away at some point, so that this is a hint to them that maybe it's not as important as they thought it was to the rest of the leadership. So we're hopeful that there are signs showing that it is really that important, and that it doesn't start to water down, as was mentioned. That's, I think, the adults' fear and the children's fear as well. Maybe it's not as important. And it actually, I've noticed it helps the kids a lot with development, right? They're just having a really good time. It's social, it's good for public speaking, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, I don't want to repeat anything they said, but we're really proud of the theater program, and I know a lot of people that are, and we don't want to, we don't want to lose anything there, so.
So if I could just respond to that, you know, I think it's important that, you know, people at home who are watching, also that we're really proud of that, too. And as the parent of a child who has participated in theater for five years, and was in JoJo, JoJo, and all those shows, I get it. My wife's the former president of FOTT. I get it. We value theater. We're going to make some decisions. We need to make some decisions moving forward. But the decisions we make in no way minimize our belief of this program or the stock that we place in the theater program. It doesn't at all. We know it's one of our, our shining stars and one of the programs that we hold up. We know that.
Great.
So please know that we're going to make every decision we can for the best interest of every kid at Tingsboro Public Schools with the resources we have.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I just spoke earlier when I mentioned about, like, you know, 35 to 50 kids, that was just the cast members.
Sure, tech, absolutely, absolutely, yep.
You know, where there are kids that, you know, you don't see them from center, but they are choreographing, they are set designing, they are lead designing. I mean, it's, it's not just for, you know, a, a, a kid who has a particular visual talent that you see on, on the stage.
Absolutely.
It's a lot more than that, so, okay.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. If I could also just, we talked a lot about social media and the comments that you read on social media. I ask everyone at home, if you have a question or a concern about anything in the schools, anything in the town for that matter, contact your elected officials, contact me, contact the administration. Yeah, ask, and this is more for, you know, the people at home who, but people comment on social media when, when they don't have the facts. And so I just, I ask, I urge everyone, contact one of you. We're all in town. We're all townies, you know. Market basket, or whatever, yeah. But we're all accessible.
Yes, yes.
Through our website, right. I was just going to say, through the Tingsboro School, all of our emails are there. They're always available to answer.
So feel free to contact anyone.
Just took a new picture.
We just took a new picture.
Took a new picture for the website.
Just don't mistake me for KJ. All right, thank you very much, please, for coming out.
Listen, we're listening to the meeting, too.
It's a public meeting.
Thank you. And speaking of shares of success, A.J., you're up.
All right, so, so far at the high school, since the last meeting, a few things have gone on. One, an award night was held to celebrate the successes of students in the freshman, sophomore, and junior classes. And awards and colleges were given to various different juniors. Additionally, a separate award night was held to celebrate the accomplishments of the seniors preparing to graduate high school, in which many different scholarships were given out to the seniors. And then also for seniors, there was an academic excellence breakfast that honored seniors that maintained a GPA of 3.75 or higher for all four years of high school. And then for all the students, they were, or for actually the freshmen, sophomore, and junior classes, they provided an opportunity to run for and elect class officers. And the freshman class elected Rosa C., Dylan H., Caterina P., and Max G. Sophomore class elected Natalie B., Megan H., Sophie D., and Trevor F. The junior class elected Jason K., Anya G., Kate B., Sarah H., and KJ M. And then for sports, the boys' tennis team played their first playoff match and lost to Leister. The girls' tennis team played their first round playoff match as well, and they lost to Lynnfield. But the girls' varsity lacrosse team advanced in the playoffs. And then also, the high school held a successful pre-prom and prom, in which Emma Strong and Lysius were elected as prom queen and king. And then seniors began their senior week this week, and they practiced graduation in preparation for their graduation on Friday night.
Hectic time of year.
Yeah, a lot going on. All right, subcommittee update. It says none at this time, however.
Yeah.
We did have a subcommittee last night for the superintendent evaluation, in which we will discuss in more detail in executive session this evening, so. That was it. Personnel, Dr. Flanagan.
Personnel, the school personnel, notificational appointments. Cindy Pelletier, physical therapist, Melanie Chandonay, BCBA. Alex Panzitakis, high school math teacher. Christina Turk, moving from .6 to 1.0 kindergarten teacher. Melissa Sullivan, moving from .6 to 1.0 kindergarten teacher. Stephen Stanley, moving from paraprofessional, 2.8 special education teacher. And Michelle Riley will be the head nurse for the district next year. In terms of resignations, we have PJ Farmham, Chris Vannell, Margot Holden, and Sue Mosley. Resignations.
Unfinished business for the year budget.
So the FY '20 budget, I just wanted to get out in front of the community and say thank you publicly for supporting a $20 million, $840,000, $840,450 budget. This number does include the $115,000 from the Special Education Stabilization Fund. And just so, you know, I know parents are here and they have concerns, that we're here and they have concerns about staffing and the pattern. You know, I think Joe says it best when he says the budget is not something that you can ever turn your back on. Since we developed this budget in April, we've had several people resign and take positions in other districts. That impacts the budget. We're keeping a very close eye right now on third grade. Class size is at about 25. If we receive more students that register over the summer, that may be something that we have to address with an additional classroom teacher. So we've got to keep our eye on that. We have some students that are popping up on our radar that potentially could be, could be out of district candidates in the future. So it's not something that we can say in January, here's the budget, nail the positions down, and then April we approve it. May goes to town meeting, and that's it. That's the budget, and Joe will talk about it in six months. We have to keep our eye on that at all times, because our population's fluid, our kids are fluid, their needs, the services that we provide. So that being said, we thank you for the $20 million, $800,000 budget. We will spend it as wisely and efficiently responsible as possible to provide as comprehensive a program for all our kids. We're going to staff appropriately. We're going to provide the services and the resources for our kids. And, you know, we're very, we're very appreciative and thankful for the support of the school committee going forward that allows us that opportunity to, to, to be creative and make sure we're satisfying all of our kids' needs. So thank you to the community for supporting that budget number.
I second everything, Dr. Flanagan.
That's not like a so far. I apologize.
Thank you to the community for supporting the schools, for sure. Valley Corbett at least agreement.
So in your drive, Mark, can you pull up 8B Valley summary?
Yep.
Make it bigger. Okay. So we recall, Valley, the Valley leased the elementary school. So we recall Valley, the Valley leased at the elementary school. The original plan or the original thought was the project was going to come in around one point six million dollars. And that was going to be cost shared between the schools and eight hundred thousand dollars. Valley Collaborative, eight hundred thousand dollars. And that would still allow the Tinsborough Public Schools an additional eight hundred thousand dollars through the lease revenue to satisfy capital projects within our own school. As we know, the prices came in higher than anticipated. The H V A C came in at one point five seven four. Windows Phase One's at three eighty-one. And while Valley Brenzinger, which is our design and project manager, they designed the entire project there, and they were sort of the G C, that's going to be a total cost of about a hundred seventy-five thousand. So we're looking at a two point four million dollar project. So we went back to Valley Collaborative and said, how can we creatively look at financing this? Valley Collaborative said, we like the spot in Tinsborough. We call that our home, we don't want to leave. Let's figure this out. So Dr. Scott at Valley Collaborative worked with the executive board there, one of which I remember, and said, we need to up our ante. So if you go down to the bottom of funding source, Valley Collaborative is willing to increase their contribution from eight hundred thousand to one point four million. And I'll tell you, the biggest reason they're willing to do that is because there is a classroom in the Lakeview School that was property of Tinsborough Public Schools. We stored cleaning supplies there. They said, if we can have that classroom, that can generate an additional two hundred thousand dollars a year of revenue for us. So we're leasing them that classroom for one dollar, and we move our cleaning supplies. At which point, they're willing to say, we'll throw in those six hundred thousand dollars towards this project. What I'm asking is, if we extend that lease by two years, and in those two years, we just charge them for operation, that also helps them take that capital money and front load that so that we can begin the H V A C project and window project this summer. So it'll only be Phase One, so as you look at the Lakeview School from the street, it would be that entire wing plus the calf and gym area. Phase Two would be the back wing that goes out towards the community center fields. So what I'm hoping is the committee will support authorizing the chair to sign an amendment to the lease, which would add two years onto the lease at just the operational cost. And I have down here at the bottom, you can see the operational cost per year is a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. They give us two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars a year. And we use the additional funding to offset capital projects for our district. So again, the benefits here, it's a tenant in that building for the next twelve years. It's a new H V A C system, it's a new window system, it's an upgraded remodeled building. It also provides eight hundred thousand dollars of capital funding for the Tinsborough Public Schools. All of this done at zero additional cost to the Tinsborough taxpayer. I will say that Bill Ricka is closing an elementary school. Tucksbay is consolidating three elementary, three or four elementary schools into one large one. If Valley Collaborative wanted to pull out of Tinsborough and go find an elementary school, they could. We don't want that. I don't think we want that. I don't think we want another empty building in town. I think this is a great asset for us, and I'm looking for your support in extending this lease for two years so that we can get these projects done.
This project also includes paving.
Paving, security cameras, playground, yeah.
So there's a lot to this project. I'll open it up to the committee.
So they're going to be in that building for twelve years?
Yes.
The current lease is a ten-year lease?
It is. So this will go through twenty thirty instead of twenty twenty-eight. Actually, the lease draft is in your drive as well, so I can open that up. Yes, so this will extend the lease from twenty twenty-eight to twenty thirty, June thirtieth, twenty thirty.
And it's at the same price, or is there?
Same price.
Is there a percentage increase over there?
No, so what we did was we fixed the price so that they'd beat us on the capital, on the capital funding.
And all the property that's going in will be in the town of Tinsborough's?
Yes. Their tenant.
They're still a tenant, even if, you know, if something happens in five years from now and they break the lease, it's still our property.
Our property, correct. Yep. So this was a creative way for them to front load some more money, capital money, so we can do these projects. And again, as I said, they're happy there, we're happy with them there. I think it's a win for the community. Happy to answer any more questions. I know we've talked a lot about this over the year.
So could I get a motion to approve the amendment?
You want a motion to extend the lease?
Motion to authorize the chair to sign it. So thank you. Our Valley meeting is this Thursday morning, so it has to be approved there first. So once that's approved, I'm asking that you authorize the chair to sign it so that we can begin work right away this summer. And we've already had a preliminary discussion of Valley, it's already passed the test there.
Do you think a motion? I'll make a motion that authorizes the chair to sign an extension for two years for the lease contract.
Perfect.
That's the two hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred dollars.
Two hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. No, that's the difference.
That's the difference.
That's what we'd be missing out on in years eleven and twelve. It's two hundred fifty thousand.
Two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carry seven zeros there?
Great. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. And thank you for all the work there.
Dr. Scott's been great to work with the Valley.
New business, Alpha Best.
Alpha Best, so we're going forward, we're going forward with Alpha Best. Incredible proposal came through, we've had, we've had great discussions with them. Alpha Best is essentially going to take over our before and after school program at T E S. They will hire our staff at the rate that we agreed to in our bargaining session with Unity Paraprofessionals this year, which is all great news. It provides greater flexibility for parents, great opportunity for parents. The cost is the exact same as our program, so it's our program with more, with more.
It's focused academic programming and secondary programming for extended opportunities for kids to do everything from robotics to Lego work to co-curricular academic support. So we feel like it's really extending the school day. It's going beyond just taking care of kids when they, parents need some, another place for them to be. So it's really going to beef up our program, but we're proud that it's going to also maintain the structure of providing, that current Tinsborough employees an opportunity to stay and live here too.
It also takes some, it takes some liability off of the school system. And the other thing it does is, Alpha Best is going to come in, we're going to take all the furniture that's in those classrooms and move it into our kindergarten program and our lower elementary school, and they're going to offer the entire program suit to nuts. Additionally, they're going to cut us a check for forty-two thousand dollars to lease our facility. So it's another revenue stream for the district, which is great.
I, you know, I took a read through it this week. It also includes the physical education aspect of it as well, not just the classroom time, which was really good because you don't want the kids sitting for that long a time. Also includes homework help, time where the kids can bring in their homework for that week or for even that day and have quality instructors to help them with that, which is just fantastic.
It's a great program, so we're excited about that. So starting Thursday of this week, they will start contacting our kindergarten parents who've already put a deposit in. And Kerry's going to do a transitional email so the parents know this isn't somebody coming from left field, just contacted my own call. Here's where we're going, here's why we're going, it's better for, it's better for our kids and our community. So I really, I'm really proud of the flexibility provides parents. And I think that's one of the things that we've heard loud and clear over the year that, gosh, you close on vacation, I don't want to do this, I want to do next week. So we're happy with that. So that's good. So that's the Alpha Best update.
Now they also, I'm sorry, they've also taken over the summer program as well? Or we're not going to that yet?
Potentially, potentially for next year. They put it, they gave us that proposal, we should have committed to that.
Yeah, okay.
Too short to do it this summer.
Well, I understand that.
All right, also on your new business, Valley Collaborative two thousand, fiscal year twenty, board member appointment. Dr. Flanagan, the superintendent of Tinsborough Public Schools is always appointed as one of the members of the board of directors of Valley Collaborative. So I need to seek a motion to appoint Dr. Flanagan to the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for fiscal year twenty.
Make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carry seven zeros there? Congratulations.
Something to you.
Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For signing of bills, tonight, there were nine bill warrants presented to the committee. I have them back all signed. In your drive are the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts for tonight. Also in your drive is some bills that were signed by Mr. Mullin, one of the single signers, back on May twentieth. In the drive again is the warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts for those bills. For signing of payroll, there were two payrolls in May. In the drive is the warrant numbers and amounts of those two payrolls. And also in your drive are the reports that make up your April nineteen financial packet. We're doing a little catch-up tonight. Those consist of the school committee budget as of the end of April, the revolving account balances at the end of April, as well as the student account balances. And we have May first enrollment for the chair.
All right, our enrollment for the elementary school, eight hundred and seventeen. Middle school, three hundred and sixty-six. High school, four hundred and eighty. Our district is at twenty-five, for a total of one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight. And we will go to school committee discussion. Scott, who's very nice.
First off, I was going to congratulate our theater program this evening. I, the funny thing is, I had all the winners right in front of me, but my computer did not charge me. So I would just want to congratulate the theater program as a whole for all of the awards that they won this year, especially the high school program who won best, best overall program for Lanaz. As this is our last meeting before the end of school, I wish to thank all of the teachers, the administrators, the support staff for another fantastic year. It just seems to be getting better every year, in my opinion, and I just want to thank you all very much for that. And the last thing, I wanted to thank Chris Pollitt and Jim Hook for a wonderful sixth grade, incoming sixth grade introduction last night. My wonderful little cherub is moving on up to the middle school this year, of next year. And it was, it was a great turnout last night. A whole lot of parents showed up, the auditorium was almost full. So we have a really enthusiastic group of parents and a great bunch of kids moving on up and looking forward to seeing them. And I'm sure the administration at the elementary school will be happy to see me go. Been eight long years in that building, this sick of me. And I'm all done.
Awesome. Well, I just want to say a lot of what Rob just said, except for the part about.
You can't copy me.
But then I also want to say congratulations to all the seniors who are graduating this Friday and to all the, and to, I hope they have a wonderful week this week because I know Senior Week is a huge deal, and I hope everyone's safe. And I wish them a wonderful graduation, which I'm sure they'll have.
Tools out. We're getting ready to have some fun. So congratulations to all the seniors graduating, wish you well in your college endeavors next year.
I just get excited as I walk around this week, up until the twelfth. There's, they're working right to the bell. Yes, we're celebrating, yes, we have Senior Week, yes, we have culminating activities at the elementary school coming up. And we've had great events for move-up time. But I walk into classrooms, I still see lab science dissecting frogs. I still see kids giving, culminating presentations at the middle school. I still see elementary schools on the floor reading and creating. And so, you know, we're pushing through and kids are working really hard, and that's a credit to the teachers and the community and the kids. We're enjoying the last couple of weeks as we should, but there's a lot of great work still happening. And it's cool to see it all kind of come to a close at the end. So thank you for all the hard work for our kids and for our teachers in the buildings. And I hope everybody has a great summer and then comes running back into school on August twenty eighth. I don't even know. Don't even, don't even think about it.
This is the coolest one I've ever found. August, sorry, man.
Ah, no.
Almost up to me, thank you.
I'd just like to say congratulations to all the seniors and also to their families because it takes a lot as a family unit to get your child through the school system and to the point of graduating. Also, thank you to our teachers, you know, right from preschool all the way up to the high school. The students couldn't do it without you. And just, you know, on a more elementary school note, thanks to the staff at the elementary school, we had a great field day last week. And also, we have a celebration of learning coming up tomorrow. So hope to see some of you at the celebration of learning.
I'm sure Mr. Mullin will be there.
Yes, yes, I will.
I want to welcome Rebecca, Becky, here. It's her first meeting, look forward to working with you. Hopefully, it's another great year like we've just had. I want to congratulate the administration on the budget work that was done. We've got a good amount of money to be able to go through the next year and make sure that we do the same thing next year as we've done this year. Want to congratulate all the high school students, the seniors moving on, and some of the schools that they've been accepted to are amazing. We've got one going to Harvard, one going to Cornell, all the ones that are going to U V O and U Mass, they've worked.
Holy cross.
All these, all these places that these kids are going now, it's just incredible to see the diversity of where all these kids can go and the different fields that they go into. They all have their own niche in the world, and hopefully, they find it and it works out well for them after they leave Tinsborough. So congratulations and best of luck.
Welcome Becky, welcome KJ. Looking forward to next year, working with you guys, sure will be fun. Also looking forward to the celebration of learning tomorrow. It's extended this year, it's a half day tomorrow, so it starts early, it starts at noon. We'll get some concerts later in the evening, so it'll be fun. As always, looking forward to graduation Friday night.
It's Dr. Flanagan's time.
So I, you know, I think we heard tonight, you know, that the theater program might be one of our biggest successes. I would say our academic program is one of our biggest successes. You know, I would, I stand by that. Our academic program is our biggest success. If you come to Tinsborough Public Schools, you can get whatever you want out of it if you put the work in. You know, the fact that we have kids going to Harvard, we put kids in Penn and Cornell. I, whatever, forget the Ivy schools. Kids are successful coming out of Tinsborough because they put the time in. And I think we have incredible staff, pre-K to twelve, that support kids, make connections with kids on a daily basis, and challenge them. And because we connect with kids personally, I think kids thrive in this district. So I would, I would say that our academic program is by far our biggest success, and I'm proud of the effort our kids put in all the time. And looking forward to graduation Friday night, to really celebrate the class of twenty nineteen, and wish them the best in all that they're going to achieve down the road.
Absolutely. I can't compete with Dr. Flanagan, so congratulations to our seniors, to our staff. And we do have a need for executive session this evening to conduct strategy sessions in preparation of negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collaborative bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We will return from executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. This action requires a roll call.
Oh, make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
And that is it, thank you and have a good night.